Good evening, everybody. Always nice to see a full house here. I'm Mark Blaskowski. I'm the superintendent until I was replaced today. By Nevin. He didn't catch that. So today we had a great day. This is always one of our favorite days where these great students come, spend a day with us, remind us why we're here and what our purpose is. So this morning started out with some breakfast and some introductions, tour of this building and all the history involved with that. And then we got an opportunity to talk with the students and the students were paired up with a counterpart, Nevin being my counterpart today. So they could talk a little bit about the different aspects of our job because we do a lot of things behind the scenes to allow things to happen. So if Ms. Ashbaugh doesn't write the checks, the teachers don't get their paychecks, etc. You know, so there's a lot of things behind the scenes. Great group of kids today. After that, we decided we'd go to Red Robin, have some lunch, and then we came back and then we practiced what it would be like to run a board meeting. So we've created some scenarios here that we went through this afternoon. They caught on really quick, caught some of my mistakes because they're just so smart. And so we made some minor corrections and they're about ready to get started. So no further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Mason.
This meeting is called to order. Superintendent Canet, will you please lead us off with the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is one of the times in the board meeting when community members are allowed to address the board. There will also be a public hearing at the end of the meeting. Does anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this time?
Mr. President, I'm a parent of a Roseville student. I saw something in a newsletter about the new graduation location. Can you tell me more about that?
That is a very good question. Our superintendent will be happy to outline and preside over that issue.
Thank you very much for bringing up this subject. In previous years, the district has held the graduation ceremony at the Bdesta Christian Church. The location has stopped renting their facilities for graduation ceremonies, so we had to find another location. Macomb Community College has been used in the past and the venue is very close, being convenient for our community. They also installed air conditioning, which was one of the reasons we left the location. However, we got word last year that we would have to find another location for the 2025 graduating class due to the venue being under construction. We have a contract with Jimmy John's Field for the ceremonies this year. We hope to return to Macomb Community College in 2026. Mr. President, can I get board approval to negotiate a contract with Macomb Community College for the graduation ceremony in 2026?
Yes, we can present this to the board. Can I get a motion to give Superintendent Canet permission to contract with Macomb Community College for the 2026 graduation ceremony?
Haleah would like to make a motion to give Superintendent Canet permission to contract with Macomb Community College for graduation services in 2026.
I need a second motion, please.
All right, Jayden would like to second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent Canet, you may begin negotiations with Macomb Community College. Good luck. Irish?
Mr. President, it is my understanding that there was a laptop refresh for staff and students. Can you give us any updates?
Deputy Superintendent Noble, can you answer that question?
Certainly. During the first five years of students' one-on-one devices in our district, we kept data on student preparedness in class, teacher ability to adjust lessons, and damage or not returned devices by students. The number on these issues were not good, so the superintendent collected a group of administrators, teachers, parents, and students to serve on a committee that would make a decision regarding what to do about these issues. The decision that came from this committee was that it would be better educationally and financially to keep devices in the buildings where they could no longer, where they could be better taken care of and functional for instruction in a classroom setting. While this was a change in the original plan for the student devices, everyone felt it was in the best interest for our community that we make full use of our investment worth millions of dollars. We did allow, in some classes like AP courses and early college, exceptions were made for students taking advanced coursework because it requires a commitment to work to be done at home. The exception allows the students to have one-on-one access throughout the school year.
Jayden?
Mr. President, what process did you do to distribute the recent technology?
Deputy Superintendent Noble, can you answer that question?
I will ask our Director of Technology Nathavia Shariska to answer that question.
The 2018 community-supported bond issue provided the two additional technology refreshes for our building computers and our student one-to-one laptops and iPads. Our plan was to replace these devices at the beginning of the 2024-2025 school year. During last year, we got feedback from staff regarding physical devices and features that they would like to see on the new devices. As Deputy Superintendent mentioned, we purchased classroom sets and charging cards for every teacher's classroom. However, we did omit our gifted and talented STEM program. Mr. President, can I get permission to purchase 100 additional laptops at the cost of $46,398 to support our science, technology, engineering, and mathematics programs in the district from the state REMC bid?
Yes, we can present this to the board. Can I get a motion to give Director Shariska permission to purchase 100 additional laptops for the STEM programs for the amount of $46,398 from the state REMC bid?
Jalen would like to motion. Move to motion to give Director Shariska permission to purchase 100 additional laptops at the amount of $46,398 for REMC bid.
I need a second motion, please.
Jordan would like to second that motion.
We need a roll call vote for this approval.
Hedrick, yes.
Graham, yes.
Plot, yes.
Hunt, yes.
May, yes.
Vorsec, yes. Motion carries. Superintendent Canet, you may begin the purchasing process. Haleah?
Mr. President, can we please get an update on the current status of our capital projects?
Superintendent Canet, will you please provide us with some information about our capital projects?
For those details, I'll ask our Executive Director of Business and Finance to provide information about our capital projects.
Yes, Mr. Vorsec. We are currently working on closing Series One of the bond we started in 2018. We will have few small projects that will be completed in the near future and that will be end of this, end of Series One. And once all products are completed, we will transfer any remaining funds to the Series Two bank accounts and close the Series One's accounts. We have begun work in ordering for Series Two of the bond, which will mostly focus on technology updates Ms. Shariska just spoke on.
Jalen?
Mr. President, I heard Roseville students have more opportunities in STEM programs. What is by STEM and why? Why do our students have more opportunities in the area?
I will direct that question to our Deputy Superintendent Dre'Shawn Noble.
I'd be happy to give you more information about this important topic. STEM is an acronym that refers to science, technology, engineering, and math in today's classrooms. You may also hear STEM referred to as STEAM, which in that case would include the arts. Some of these topics are built right into the class offerings, but some classes are intended to specifically focus on just these areas. STEM opportunities are important for our students because these are all growing industries in our workforce. These more advanced jobs provide opportunities for higher wages and fulfilling careers. We feel it is extremely important that our students at Roseville Community Schools have the same opportunity as other students across the state as they move to higher educa- oh, to higher education into the workforce after high school. During the development of our strategic plan several years ago, STEM coursework was one of the major focuses of our academic growth. Over the past couple of years, we have grown existing classes and have added additional classes to increase possibilities of students. At Roseville High School, one of our newest CTE courses is Mecatronics. This provides students with an opportunity to develop skills in block coding, 3D design, 3D printing, laser cutting, and robotics controls. This year, we were very excited to add drones class as an introductory course in flight mechanics and professional use of drones as it relates to career opportunities.
Jordan?
Ms. Noble, that's great to hear, but do we offer STEM classes at any other levels?
Yes, we currently offer several classes at the middle school level. The most recently added were the Intro to Robotics and Remotely Operated Vehicles. These hands-on STEM courses provide students with the opportunity to build and use functional tools as they learn beyond a textbook. Both classes are extremely popular with our middle school students and pair well with our already existing STEM classes for exploring technology, computers, and keyboarding and coding. Our gifted and talented program has a 100% focus on STEM coursework for third, fourth, and fifth graders. This hands-on class helps prepare our students for next level of STEM opportunities. Next school year, students will be participating in a program called Little Inventors. Little Inventors program is sponsored by the Macomb Intermediate School District and provides opportunities for students to invent, create, and market an original product. Students that advance in this competitive program will partner with industry professionals to learn the nuts and bolts of what potential STEM careers look like. Moving forward, we will systemically provide more opportunities for Roseville students to participate in STEM classes and be prepared for the workforce headroom.
Brooklyn?
Mr. President, we know that attendance coming out of COVID has been a struggle for many districts. What is Roseville doing to help improve attendance in the district?
Thank you, Ms. Plot. Our Superintendent Nevin Canet can field that question.
Our attendance initiatives have come out of our attendance committee. We are working on the following initiatives: Safe Walk to School, Attendance Incentives, Rethinking Recession, Engaging Students and Families, and After School and Summer Learning. These strategies have research that shows they can make an impact on attendance. We have a lot of work to do on these strategies and will continue to work on them through next school year. Safe Walk to School signs are available at any of our buildings. We ask all our parents and community members to pledge to watch our streets for suspicious behavior and report it to the police. Display a sign to show our students that our community cares. We also ask you to send your child to school on time every day if possible. Missing one day takes three days to make up for the missed learning. Now, if you are chronically absent, you have missed 18 days of school. That takes 54 school days to make it up, just shy of 11 weeks of school.
Absolutely. I will have our Coordinator of Transportation and Maynus address that.
The law you referenced is HB 4201. This law helps protect our drivers and students from unauthorized people entering a school bus. 4201 states that any person that violates this law may be ordered to pay a civil fine up to $500. It is already relatively new law and all buses are equipped with stickers outside the main entrance door of the bus for all those to see.
Mr. President, I read that there is a law that allows districts to receive funds for bus stop arm violations. Can you explain this new law?
Absolutely. I will have our school board attorney address that.
Michigan originally passed a law, MCL 257.682 in 1990, allowing cameras to be placed on the stop arms of the bus. This law was recently amended in 2024 to allow law enforcement to issue a citation within 30 days of the incident. The police must review the video to ensure there is enough evidence to issue the citation. Currently, Roseville Community Schools do not have cameras on our buses. This might be something the district would consider in the future. The law allows the money generated from the citations to go back to the district. The citation issued from video evidence can range from $100 to $500.
Brooklyn?
Mr. President, after attending games at the high school athletic complex, I wondered what other upgrades would be taking place.
Our Director of Building and Grounds, Brian Blackman, can answer that question.
Our three new school boards for baseball and softball diamonds have been delivered and installed. Once the weather improves, we also plan to add more dirt to the infield where needed.
And what about the clinic at Roseville Middle School?
The clinic at Roseville Middle School is complete and we were currently waiting for a session to complete its transition to Henry Ford Health Systems so they can hire more staff. We have a nurse and expect a mental health worker soon. Their current workspace is complete and ready for additional staff.
Irish?
Mr. President, can you give us any updates on our federal and state grants?
Our Director of School Improvement and Grants, Alicia Hayes, can answer that question.
Thank you, Mr. President. The district has been awarded many additional grants, one being the 35th J Grant. This is an elementary literacy grant designed to support professional development, curriculum, and other literacy support. We have been able to fund many items and activities with this grant. We have been able to provide literacy essentials training for all our teachers as well as purchase a supplementary curriculum for our students decide to improve foundational reading skills. In addition, just this past month, we were able to host our first ever district-wide literacy event that drew close to 400 students and family members. Students could purchase books using the Scholastic voucher, which is a great way to provide literacy across our district.
Jalen?
Mr. President, can you tell us more about Zero Eyes we have been hearing about?
Certainly. Our Director of Technology Nathavia Shariska can speak on this.
In January 2024, Roseville Community Schools added Zero Eyes as an additional layer of security to its protocols. Zero Eyes connects to existing security cameras and monitors streaming video feeds for firearms. The AI image classification system processes thousands of images per second and immediately notifies trained personnel in the Zero Eyes Operation Command Center if an image contains a firearm. Once identified as a legitimate firearm, Roseville PD and district administrators are notified.
Jordan?
Ms. Shariska, how does the high school use the security cameras to monitor the hallways and the students?
This September, a security camera monitoring room was created at Roseville High School. This room is staffed during the school day and will be responsible for monitoring the security cameras. By having staff monitor the cameras, it will provide a proactive approach to solving potential building security breaches and student behavioral problems.
Jordan?
Mr. Canet, I've noticed on the news lately an increased level of outrageous behavior in public places. So how does the district handle these situations?
If an individual acts aggressively or threatening at the buildings or on school property that includes buses, the building will send out a restricted access warning letter. If the behavior continues, an official no access letter will be issued. Most restrictions will expire at the end of the school year. Our goal here is to work with our community in a respectful manner and look to foster positive conversation and relationships.
Mr. President, we hear some updates in some of our cafeterias. What improvements were made?
Our Coordinator of Food Service, Drew Morris, will fill us in on these changes.
The Food Service Department installed generators on the walk-in freezers and coolers at Roseville High, Roseville Middle, and Eastland Middle. This will help reduce food loss during power outages. There are also plans to introduce more plant-based entrees to the menu.
Jayden?
Mr. President, I would like to shift our discussion to the struggles many districts face in Michigan with teacher shortages.
Superintendent Canet, can you please explain, talk about this?
I will direct this question to our Assistant Superintendent of Personnel, Jacob Blair.
Roseville has been working extremely hard to retain and hire staff during this challenging time. By far, the most effective means of attracting talent is through networking. Our current staff members have made many referrals, both certified and non-certified staff. This allows us to hire individuals that have more personal connections to others and enhances both commitment and morale. Roseville is supporting a grow-your-own approach as well. If an individual has a bachelor's degree and can pass the MTTC teacher exam, we can place them in a classroom and then support them as they pursue an alternative route to certification. We have discovered several fine candidates that will make excellent teachers. Also, a candidate with 60 credits can teach on a substitute permit while they finish a degree program. The teacher shortage is a national problem. It is not unique to Michigan. Hopefully, something can be done to enhance the profession. In the 80s and 90s, we had a surplus of teaching candidates. Those days may never come back, yet perhaps we can find some middle ground.
Brooklyn?
Mr. President, I have heard that we have been implementing changes to address social emotional health of our students. Could you elaborate on that?
Ms. Anderson, our Director of Special Education, can explain more about that because she has taken on that task.
This year, using 31 AA grant money, we were able to spend approximately of $125,000 on training materials and items aimed at improving social emotional well-being of our students. Many staff members completed the Start Trauma Informed School Training. The Zones of Regulation and Little Spa of Emotions materials were purchased for the social emotional staff. And each building now has a sensory room or sensory lending library items, including weighted blankets, sensory tools, fidgets, and alternative seating.
Haleah?
Mr. President, this year's homecoming festivities were a lot of fun. Can you tell us more about this year's events to honor our 100th year anniversary?
Ms. Tucker, would you please explain more about this?
We have had a lot of fun this year celebrating our 100-year anniversary so far. We kicked off our year with a successful Panther Day in August and continued with homecoming in October. This year's homecoming featured an alumni staff tent, messages from distinguished alums during the game, and three parade grand marshals. Ernie Witt, a 1970s Brablik graduate and a retired Major League Baseball player; Dorothy Romano, a 1946 RHS graduate and the oldest living RCS graduate at 97 years of age; and Robert Taylor, 1976 Brablik graduate and the city of Roseville mayor. We are also in the planning stages for an event most likely held in May for the alumni and retired staff members to come back and visit their old schools. More information will be released in the upcoming months.
Jalen?
Ms. Tucker, can you tell us about the other activities we have attended to celebrate 100 years of our district?
We introduced a 100-year district logo and created an apparel store for 100-year clothing and gear. We also built a throwback apparel store featuring clothing designs for old Roseville High School Wildcats, Brablik High School Cougars, Eastland High School Pirates, and the original 1989 Roseville High School Panthers logo. We have also spent the year scouring through archives of photos and videos throughout the past 100 years. We have been posting pictures on Facebook each day highlighting the history of Roseville schools, which has been very well received. Each school has also been incorporating the 100-year theme into their events throughout the school year. 100 years is a special anniversary and we want to make sure that our community, staff, and students have the opportunity to not only appreciate our history but also to create our present and our future. Thank you to our 100-year planning committee for helping plan this year's activities and events.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. That is very exciting. If there are no other questions from the board, we will move on to the next agenda item. It is now time for a second public hearing. Does anyone from the audience have any questions at this time?
President Vorsec, I am a proud parent of a Roseville student. We know about the scholarships awarded to eligible Roseville High School seniors every year and a scholarship dance that is held to raise funds. When will the gala be held this year and how can I buy tickets?
I'm going to direct that question to our Executive Director of Business and Finance, Deani John.
This year's winter gala will be held on Saturday, March 8. The public can purchase tickets to the event as well as tickets for the basket raffle in a few different ways. First, you can use the link on the district website for RevTrek. RevTrek is an online payment platform that allows us to post items for sale to the public or for donations. Many of our schools, as well as Roseville Community Schools Scholarship Foundation, have many, have items posted on RevTrek's site. This resource is a great convenience for the public to use and efficient for the business office to process financial transactions. Another way that tickets can be purchased is by sending a check or a money order to the Administration Building, Attention Theresa Tamala, or purchase in person at the Administration Building during remote business hours.
Thank you, Ms. John. If there are no other questions or comments, we will continue with the next agenda item. Nice things happening. I will now turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Rice.
Well, welcome, everybody. At this time, we actually do have nice things happening all the time at our meetings and at this meeting, it's no different. At this time, our students have an honored staff member that means a lot to them and we will go through and one by one, they will, they will talk about them. So at this time, I think we're all going to have them all come up at once and stand directly behind your students. So if honored guests can come up, it'll take a minute.
Ms. Jordan has been the answer when someone asks, who's that teacher who made an impact in your life? She's patient, understanding, and very lenient when it comes to her students. If you was to ask me freshman year, what's your favorite subject, I probably would have said Jim. But Ms. Jordan, as my mentor, I come to love the subjects she teaches and understands it more. Ms. Jordan has had a big impact through these last four years of both my academic and personal growth. Through the years of guidance and passion for English, she has not only helped me improve my skills in the curriculum but also a deeper love for learning. Her ability to challenge and inspire me has pushed me to think more critically, write more effectively, and approach life with a greater sense of curiosity and ambition. Thanks to her encouragement and steady support, I now feel motivated to pursue more in life, striving to reach my full potential both in and out of the classroom. Because of her, I will keep striving to reach for more in life. Thank you, Ms. Jordan, for all you do, for your students, and most of all, me.
Okay, I'm Alacia and I'm honoring Mrs. Brewer. During the times of our lives where we are influenced and molded into the people we are meant to be, realizing the hardships and characteristics that creates a good person, we have people that guide us and influence us to the positive and most honest things that changes our perspective throughout our lives. The people who thickens our skin and throws us wisdom when we think we're going to fall apart. Sometimes it takes us a minute to notice, but I will not pass up this opportunity to honor Ms. Brewer. As that person, she is not only a teacher, no. Ms. Brewer exceeds the standard of being a teacher. She applies herself, offering knowledge, virtues, and honesty. Not only does she teach English, she takes the time to learn who our students are. I personally can say she has made an impact and I know students that would agree. Helping me find a career, job shadow, opportunity- Helping me find a career, job shadow opportunity, giving me books to cure my boredom when I had no technology. Helping me to become a leader and educating me, so I knew immediately who I would like to honor. To an outstanding teacher, I were Ms. Brewer.
Hi, my name is Shazman and this is my first year at Roseville High School. So this was all new to me from meeting new friends and teachers, but one teacher made a significant difference in my experience this year as being a new student and that is Mr. Blackmire. From the very first day, he greeted me with warmth and encouragement, making me feel welcome and valued in an unfamiliar environment. The willingness to take time to understand my challenges and provide guidance helped me this year navigate the complexities of high school life with this being my last year. Whether it was through personalized feedback on assignments or simply checking on my well-being, this teacher has eased my anxiety of coming to a new school and has motivated me to engage more fully in my studies and extracurricular activities. Their support not only enhanced my academic performance, but also instilled in me a confidence that has continued to shape my journey. So thank you, Mr. Blackmire, for welcoming me and making me feel like I belong here and just helping me out with my last year of high school.
Hello, my name is Drew and I'm honoring my culinary teacher, Mr. Thompson. He dedicates his time to work one-on-one with me and other students, demonstrating essential knife skills and cooking techniques. Through personal feedback and encouragement, he has helped develop confidence in creating flavorful dishes by giving a supportive environment and sharing industry experiences. The teacher inspired me to pursue the passion for culinary arts wholeheartedly.
I used to think technology was overly complicated, a system of things I couldn't quite wrap my head around. At the time, it seemed almost impossible to learn anything past restarting the Wi-Fi router. But to learn, you need a great teacher, whether it be yourself or someone else. So what truly makes a great teacher? Is it their knowledge, their passion, or perhaps their ability to see potential where others don't? In my eyes, Mr. Smika embodies all of these qualities and more. He took the time to simplify complex concepts so he could easily grasp the information. From the time he played a catchy and enjoyable song about the process of photosynthesis to remember the fundamental details, or when our whole class did a crazy yet educational lab on how guinea mac tea, which tasted both unique yet familiar, affected our taste receptors. He meant learning not only fun, but unforgettable. Mr. Smika has also been such a strong role model in my life, a source of support I knew I could turn to, to help, for help when I was struggling. To me, he exemplified patience and perseverance, showing me that even the most complex problems could be solved with enough effort and determination. Last year, when I struggled with how to manage my team to build a successful underwater vehicle, he gave me invaluable nudges in the right direction. Without his essential advice, patience, and care, my team and I wouldn't have not earned only one, but two awards for that very vehicle. Mr. Smika is a man that has guided me to be confident and proud of who I am. He has nurtured my passion for technology, transforming me from a hesitant student into a confident engineer and team leader. Mr. Smika, thank you for believing in me, for guiding me, and for showing me what it means to be a truly exceptional educator. Your influence will remain with me always.
Hi, guys. For those of you who don't know, on top of teaching English eleven, Ms. Jordan is our yearbook advisor. This is Ms. Jordan's sixth book and I am so incredibly grateful to say that I've been able to work on the last two books alongside her. During my sophomore year, I met Ms. Jordan for the first time after completing my schedule for my junior year. She asked me if I was interested in skipping Journalism One and going straight into Journalism Two. At first, I was incredibly surprised she had asked me because she had never seen my writing nor even met me. She had only heard of me because I was super involved. Though Ms. Jordan took a gamble by taking me into her yearbook class, I adapted to the class quickly and became an editor. Ms. Jordan and I clicked and we worked together and we are still a team. Ms. Jordan has always been there for me time and time again, always willing to listen to my crazy nonsense I call life. Ms. Jordan works so hard at everything. On top of juggling her own two crazy busy kids, she comes to Roseville High School every day with a smile and puts in her all to deal with her extra children like me. I have never had another teacher in my last twelve years that has truly made such a difference in how I view myself. In the last two years, I have changed so much and had plenty of ups and downs and Ms. Jordan has been right there through the thick and thin for me. Thank you for continuing to make my day better each, to make my day better each day and always having my back. I love you so much and I would have done any, I would not have been able to, wait. I'm sorry. I would have done without you or your book. I am still incredibly grateful for all the opportunities you have given me and I will never forgive you or your class in the way it allowed me to grow as the person I am today. Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
All right. My name is Dre. Tonight, I would like to recognize Mr. Backless. I never personally had his class, but you know, he still, he still always had a positive impact on my day. You know, whether it was, you know, walking through the hall, talking about our common interests like sports, or helping me with like English assignments and flex, he still managed to have a positive impact on my day and I'm very appreciative of that. Thank you.
You ready? To Coach Baker, the reason I picked you wasn't because of your humor or your personality. I picked you because you made a huge difference in my life. Whenever I needed something, you were always right there to provide it. If I ever needed someone to vent to, you're always there listening to me and giving me an amazing feedback. Especially when I'm down, you always find ways to cheer me up. But if I'm being completely honest, the main reason I picked you was because you became a father figure in my eyes away from home and I wouldn't be able to thank you enough for that. I love you a lot and I wish I could take you with me when it comes time for me to go. Just know I will never forget you and I promise I'll visit. I hope you'll always remember me and the members we have. P.S. It's okay to cry. You have my shoulder.
I had Ms. Marash both semesters on my freshman year. It was my favorite class I ever had in Roseville in general. Yes, I enjoyed all my classmates. I continue to be friends with them to this day. No, she did not let me skip out on classwork. Not at all. I was more interested in what Ms. Marash was teaching, for example, the mockrels. Ms. Marash made me question subjects that I wanted to learn, that we learned because I was amazed by the history and folktales of other countries. They are the countries that are own. She made me more excited to know more, so I was very thankful for Ms. Marash. Thank you for the lessons that year. Thank you for the lessons that year because I'll never forget them.
When I first met Mr. Randolph, I thought he was a very grumpy old man. But he very quickly proved me wrong. He was something, someone that I knew I could always rely on, I could always talk to without judgment because he most likely went through it as well when he was my age. He taught me knowledge and he always gave me stories of wisdom that always touched my heart. He got me through half of my high school year and he always cared for his students in some special way. So he always knew how to turn my day around and could always tell if there was something off about me. And I am the person I am today because of his advice, his counsel, and so much more. He is an inspiration to me and he is someone who has always taught me about the finer things in life. He's taught me life stories and he has helped me grow as a person. And if I could put into words how much he has meant to me, we would be here all night. So he is what I call an amazing teacher and I am truly beyond grateful for everything he has done for me and I will miss him so much when I graduate. Thank you, Mr. Randolph.
Hi, my name is Nenam Canat and I'm honoring Mr. Cheshire. Mr. Cheshire has been my teacher for the last three years and he's still my teacher till this day. His classroom has always been a safe place where I knew I was supported and understood. He knew how to handle any situation, which made it easy to trust him, and that trust went both ways. He even gave me the opportunity to be the drum major of our marching band, believing in me and my ability to lead. Beyond that, he is one of the funniest teachers I know, always trying to keep up with Gen Z slang and brain rot to connect with his students. His humor makes learning more enjoyable, but he also pushes us to work hard and do our best. Mr. Cheshire is not just a great teacher, he is someone who genuinely cares about his students and makes a lasting impact.
All right, my name is Mason. I'm honoring Mr. Kovak today. Mr. Kovak is one of the best role models, teachers, and mentors that someone could ask for because he leads with passion, integrity, and outstanding commitment to his students' success. He not only gives off knowledge, but also inspires those around him to strive for excellence, pushing them to reach their full potential. His ability to connect with students on a personal level, offering guidance and encouragement, sets them apart as more than just a teacher. He's a true mentor who genuinely cares. Through his patience, wisdom, and dedication, Mr. Kovak creates a supportive and motivating environment where students feel the power to grow academically and personally. His influence extends far beyond the classroom, shaping lives and influencing values that last a lifetime. That's why it's an easy choice to recognize him tonight.
My name is Brooklyn and today I'd like to honor Ms. Sparks, a teacher who has changed my view on learning and continuously provided support for me whenever needed. Whenever I've had a bad day, I knew when walking into Ms. Sparks' class, my day would turn around, all because of the environment of her classroom. Furthermore, up until the point of me having her class, I assumed that maybe there wasn't a way of learning that stood out to me as the most efficient. She taught me that there's countless ways material can be taught, including my favorite, which is demonstrating visually how and why things happen the way they do. We would do experiments to see for ourselves how reactions occur while also learning teamwork skills between groups rather than taking notes and doing normal tests. Ms. Sparks would challenge us on a daily basis, which is something I've never experienced a Jena teacher do, as well as award us with candy every week. She made her class a welcoming and safe environment, especially by letting us share every week out loud what we're thankful for. I'm thankful for you, Ms. Sparks, and everything you've taught me in one short semester. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Halaia Hunt and the teacher that I'm honoring tonight is Ms. Colias. First, I want to start off by saying thank you so much for taking the time out of your day to put together this meeting and allow us to have the chance to be here and run this meeting. Ever since I met Ms. Colias, she has welcomed me and her students with open arms and has given us amazing energy with her wonderful personality. Over the past two years, I have been in her class. Not only is she a good teacher, but she's an amazing person as well. I'm honestly extremely grateful that I was able to learn from you and I want to appreciate you for the wisdom and knowledge you have given and shown me for all those times I've been in your class. Lastly, I want to say thank you once again for being my teacher and guiding me in the right direction. I wish you the best so I continue to teach at Roseville High School and deserve this and many more. Thank you, Ms. Colias.
Good evening. My name is Jayden and I'm honoring Mr. Komarowski. I've had Mr. K every year in high school and when I was a freshman, I took welding because I thought it would be fun. And man, I was right. I made some things people couldn't even think about making themselves. And whenever I have a question, I can always ask K and he can always help me out. Whenever Mr. K sees someone sitting down, he'll go over to them and he'll ask them what's going on with their project or if they need help because he always hates kids sitting around in his class. But you can't really help that, not with technology. But most kids don't see the value of the things in his class and it helps me get through high school. Being able to make things has helped me get through school. If K wasn't pushing me so hard to get up and get what I need done and get my work done, then I don't think I would have made it through the years. And to be honest, and certainly, through the years, to be honest, and certainly, I don't think I'd be where I am now, on track to graduate, without his support.
Hi, my name is Jacob. I just wanted to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to Mr. Rhodey. You've not only told us, you've not only taught us valuable lessons in class, but you've also shown us what it means to be patient, understanding, and dedicated. Your passion for teaching and your commitment to our growth never goes unnoticed. Thank you for always going the extra mile to make sure that we understand, for being there when we need help, and for creating a classroom where we feel inspired and encouraged. Your hard work has made a lasting impact and I'm truly thankful for everything you've done. I appreciate you, Mr. Rhodey.
Hello, my name is De'Ani John and I want to first off saying, like, Mom, get your phone out, please, and record this. She didn't, she didn't get the memo. I don't appreciate that. I'm waiting on you. Okay, so today I chose Miss Bradley because when I first came to Roseville Community Schools, I went to stealing and she became my first sweet teacher. She made learning fun in her classroom and it was a safe place for me. She made the biggest impact on me when I found out she was an author. She made me love books today. But when she first, when I first found out she had made a book, I really wanted her, I really wanted a copy. At the time, I was too young, so I wasn't able to read it. But despite that fact, she sent me a book for Christmas. Me and my family had opened it and I was overly excited. I forever be thankful for the simple impact Miss Bradley has made on me and I will forever carry on with me the rest of my life.
Hi, my name is Brian. I want to first start off with I've always hated math. In ninth grade, math was very tough for me and I often struggled with it. Thanks, thanks to Mr. La Forge' clear explanations and patient guidance, I began to understand and enjoy math. I owe most, I owe much of my success in math to him and I am truly grateful for his support. Thank you for letting me share my appreciation for Mr. La Forge. Even though he thinks Allen Iverson is the GOAT, he'd still be one of my favorite math teachers.
Today, today I will be honoring Mr. Clem. There are people who are good at something and then there are others who act like they were made for that sole purpose. And that statement couldn't be more true for the person standing behind me. Just like LeBron James was born to play basketball, Mr. Theodore Clem was born to teach. When he was my teacher back in 2018, I had just moved to the state of Michigan. Going to school was very hard for me those first few weeks. I was in a totally new environment and I had no idea what to do. I had no clue how things were going to turn out at all. But I'm glad that I had Mr. Clem to give me the, to get me through that time. His patience with my math skills, along with his ability to make school entertaining, made the transition much easier for me. He'd go above and beyond basic teaching. He made me feel like I belonged within this community. So, that, that's the kind of person he is. It's the kind of teacher that we've all been lucky to have. And if you look at his work, if you look at his, the way he acts in the classroom, you can tell how much passion he has for education. So, you know, not just for me, but for everybody who's had the pleasure of having him as a teacher. Thank you.
So what's going to happen is we're going to give an opportunity for each of the students to talk a little bit about their day and who, what they kind of learned from their experience with their counterpart. And then the counterpart, us, will say a couple of words about you. So we're going to start with Mr. Janay down in the corner.
Okay, so obviously, as you guys know, I'm a part of the yearbook staff and throughout the last two years, Ms. Jordan has given me the opportunity to use a camera and has genuinely made me fall in love with using a camera. And for the longest time, I've always seen Joe Janay everywhere. Like literally, I remember I was in kindergarten at my concert and Joe Janay was recording it. And when Ms. Colias was like, do you want to do the mock school award? I was like, yes, and I immediately knew who I wanted to shadow. And I handed her the paper the same class period that she gave it to me. Today, I learned a lot about what Joe Janay does. He does so much more than I thought and probably more than anybody in this room aside from like his coworkers know. He does so much and honestly, like, I think his work definitely needs more, um, just like, yeah, yeah, we'll say money, we'll say money. And just like overall, like I had a really good day getting to follow him around. He let me use his fancy camera to take pictures and so overall, I had a really great day.
Yeah, ditto. I've gotten a couple of chances to interact with Faith this year via, for the yearbook and the homecoming parade and it was nice to spend the day with her. She's just a really-
She's just a really, really sharp young lady and she's got a wonderful future, so thanks, Faith.
Okay, so my day, meeting Mr. Antoine, it was amazing. I originally wanted to do this position since Mr. Schmicka made me fall in love with technology, so I was curious about how the higher level of it worked. So then I was able to be blessed to be here and be him and learn about his job. It was a lot more than I was anticipating because like I knew he ran the technology, I knew, but hearing everything that he does and hearing about all his experience, everything he does in a single day even, that he's done for the whole district, it was shocking but very educational and I was very glad I was able to spend this day with him.
I'd just like to say that I'm very glad that our paths had an opportunity to cross today and I look forward to the bright future that you're going to have. You're a really smart, articulate young woman and I think our future's bright because of you.
Sadly, Andrea Dyshard could not be here today due to her leg surgery, but I'm sure if me and her met, we would have gotten along very well. I don't have much to say, but that's about it. What did we discover today? Who I belong to? Oh, Jan Moore, okay. My grandma, that is 76, I believe, she used to work for... I'm sorry, you knew her, you knew her. She worked for Eastland Middle School as a lunch lady and that's all. I mean, that's all I gotta say.
Hi, my name is Jasmine and Mr. Blackmeat was the one to actually get me to do this today, the Board of Education. And I didn't, I missed, I met Ms. Tom over here and I didn't actually realize that there's a lot for the special education from dealing with the kids and of how much it goes with to it. And it was just very nice to hear her out and how, what she does for her work and just what they provide for them. And it was just really nice to meet her.
It was a pleasure to spend some time with Jasmine. She asked more questions than any other student that shadowed me, so I've been doing this for nine years, so you should be proud of yourself. Very insightful questions, shared some personal experiences that she has, so she has some background knowledge in special ed through family members, so that was cool to hear about. And I'm looking forward to, you know, seeing what she's going to do in the future. She's headed to Northern Michigan to study in the medical field and she shares a passion of helping children, which we can all relate to. So thank you for spending time with me today.
Hi, so today I shadow Nicole Povell and today I had a great time shadowing her. I realized that she do way more than you would think and she gives money to all the schools and the whole entire district. Can I say that? Yes, so she, she's the one who's funding everything, all the events that we like to do and saying no to the things that we can't do. But I really had a great time talking to her. She really opened my eyes to a lot of things for after college, like going abroad and things like that, but I just wanted to say thank you.
I enjoyed my time with Alasia and speaking of going abroad, I thought, as we were talking, because I don't like talking about my job that much because it can be boring at times, although people do like getting money. I like to listen to what her plans are for the future and I found that we have many things in common. I'm just going to share two. And going abroad after, after high school is something that I did, so I thought that was interesting that we both shared that. And then we both have shih-tzus, so we had to share pictures.
Hi. Today, I hung out with Mr. Sikorski and I'm just going to say, you are, you're a good one for waking up at four o'clock in the morning to go check those roads because I wouldn't be able to do it. I had fun today. I saw where the buses get fixed and, oh my God, it smelled so bad. It smelled like, it smelled so bad, it smelled like a shop. But we did have fun. We went to see where, where he does his work with the buses and everything like that and glad that we were allowed to eat at the case. But yeah, I did have fun, thank you.
So I got to talk to and hang out with, a little bit with Kiana today and you're headed to Saginaw, right? You're looking to play volleyball possibly? That's pretty cool. So I did get to take her over to the lounge and she actually met one of the drivers and the last name, you know, came across and I said, "Scorpio", you know, I know that name, I go, "You got a little brother or sister or something?" And she's like, "Yeah, I'm sorry, Giovanni's my brother." And I'm like, "Oh, okay, I understand." So no, she's got a bright future, it was great hanging out with you and best of luck to you.
So I was with Mr. Dave Rice today. I went to his office, it was a very cool office. We had, talked about his job and had a good conversation about my post-grad, my postgraduate plans and how I want to do something similar to what all three of his kids do and they are, all three of them doctors, that's kind of crazy. So, yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Funny, DreShawn stole my thunder in that I had heard how bright he was and how cool he was, but how quiet he was. And so I thought, oh, we have 45 minutes alone in my office, we're going to have to talk, we're going to have to figure things out. So I really liked talking about him and I did want to just say that he seems to have a very bright future, he's got a plan for after school. I'm going to say it to put the pressure on you. So he's thinking of going pre-med for his undergrad and then to medical school to become a doctor. He has doctors in his family and other medical people in his family. And I'll tell you, after talking to him for, we almost made it 45 minutes, it was more like 35 and then we ran out of stuff. But it sounds, it seems like the kind of person that can get it done and have all the faith in the world. And the other thing is my daughter went to Central Michigan and Central Michigan's one of the places that he was thinking of. Another place he was thinking of going was Wayne State. My wife graduated there or Oakland University, I graduated there. So we did have some stuff to talk about, just nothing about my job because it's kind of boring to a teenager. Thank you.
Today, I was shadowing Ms. Gina Aido and I mean, at first I was like, man, I really don't want to do this, but she actually was like, you know, she actually made me seem like, felt welcome because at first I thought I had Ms. Brun and then I was like, nah, you don't. So I do, I do really appreciate her. I do really appreciate her today, I do hope that we get close and I do want to hear more stories about how Coach Baker was in our school.
So today I was with Irish and it was really great. Usually we have the students ask us questions and shockingly, the teenagers don't have a lot of questions for us on a day when they could be in class or should be in class. So we kind of turned the tables and asked them some questions and got a lot of good information and stuff from the school, so it was really great talking with everybody today. And I'm really proud of you, Joe, just want to say that too.
So today my counterpart was Mr. McCarthy, Matthew McCarthy, yes. And we really did not talk often today, I think we caught up at, I think, once?
Just a little bit.
Just a little bit. He told me he was going to be busy today, I understood it. But throughout the rest of the day, I did get to tour the rest of the administration building. And I was just surprised about how much effort everybody puts in for the rest of the Rosewood schools, so I appreciate y'all for that, thank you. And I appreciate Mr. McCarthy.
Unfortunately, I have a day job and I wasn't able to spend much time today with Jalen, but I could tell that the couple of times that we did talk and it was brief, that you're a bright young man and probably have a wonderful future ahead of you, so good luck to you.
My counterpart today was Mr. Joseph DeFulice and we did not get a lot of time to talk, but we did talk a few and it is harder to be a secretary than I thought it would be. But, you know, his job seemed pretty cool and he has a lot more advice, you know, unlike how to do it. Also, this building is a lot more bigger than I thought it was. They, I had, there were secret doors, I'm secret doors, I was so confused. It was a lot of doors.
I just want to say Jordan's a very intelligent young lady. She texted me, we were going to get together and do an interview, she wanted to interview me. That never happened because of my crazy schedule, but we did, she did interview me before the meeting started last week. And I just wanted to say she had a lot of very intelligent questions and I hope I answered them correctly for her. And I think she's going to go a long way in life and her parents should be very proud of her.
My name's Nevin Kanet. My counterpart today was Mr. Blaskowski. We kind of just, well, we talked a lot, actually, we had more than enough time. We were actually late because we talked more than 45 minutes. Basically, what I've learned is that he basically does everything. He just kind of, you know... He assigns people to do the work. But, you know, he still does a lot of work. I found out that he has two dogs that are really cool that I would like to beat. Hopefully, he brings them to the high school soon. But yeah.
So talking to Nevin today, obviously, playing the role of superintendent in this role is a big role. And we talked a little bit about, you know, he wanted to know what my schedule is like and I said I don't have one because it's what, 24/7, right? It's, you know, you're on call at all times and we talked a little bit about snow days, but I got to know a little bit about Nevin and this guy's smart, like, he's going to U of M, what am I, biochemistry? Oh geez, that's like, I can hardly say, and I'm a science teacher and I know that's hard. And, you know, and so I asked him, you know, why biochemistry? And he had a sense of purpose, you know, he's got a story in his life that's driving him to that goal. And so I expect really good things from Nevin and to hear about those stories when he moves along to college and when you graduate from college, okay? So stay in touch with us, we like to hear the stories. Congratulations.
Mason and I are going to go last.
Here comes the roast.
Okay, so today Mr. Switnowski was at his day job, but I met him about a week or two ago and I just knew like from the moment I met him that he was the coolest one here. Besides, you know, Mr. Blaskowski, when he gives us, Mr. Blaskowski gives us snow days, so that is kind of cool too, but, you know...
I'll remember that next time.
No, no, this Thursday, I got you. So, but it was nice to learn all, like, day to day, how everyone seems to truly care, like everyone here really cares. And I spent time with the other board members talking about stuff that goes on at the high school and they truly listened to what we had to say, so that was really nice to feel appreciated.
As Brooklyn did say, unfortunately, I had to work today. Federal employee, you know, the atmosphere right now with federal employees, it was kind of hard not to or tried to get off, but it didn't work out, so I had to, had to work today. But did have the opportunity, like she said, to talk to her a couple of weeks ago and just that, you know, the conversation that I had with her and, you know, listening to everybody else today, all of your parents should be proud of, you know, the accomplishments that you have up here and just continue to strive for that.
Hi, I'm Haleyah once again. And today I was shadowing Ms. Williams Ward, Ward, and... To my knowledge, I had, I don't know... Black excellence.
Okay, that's sweet, y'all. Did y'all get together? I won an award from MACOM, Celebration for Black Excellence, last year. I'm assuming that's what they're talking about. That's the one that we talked about this morning. So yes, so I am the 2025 Michigan Chronicle Woman of Excellence. Oh, that's a job. It's okay. Woman of Excellence, honoree, honoree, okay, I'm with you. So I got to sit with a lot of the students who were school board, who were acting for school board. They are awesome. They had so many questions, they had, not necessarily, no, they had so many concerns that they brung to us. And it was just, they kept talking, telling us about different things going on, wanting to help. And I just loved that. I loved that they were bringing to us things that might need to be done, their concerns, and I really think it's important for the students to tell their concerns because you can't fix something if you don't know. So they, they really brung it today and I really, I really enjoyed all of them, so.
My name's Jaden and I chose the second trustee and I didn't really get to talk to her, but, and I don't really have like a lot to say here. I do have like one thing to say though, this place, you can get lost in it.
So, Jaden, it's, it's nice to be here tonight and thank you so much. And I actually had another young lady reach out to me and said, "Mrs. Brun, I am your, your..." Shadow, yes. So we had a very long conversation. So we have some catching up to do, Jaden. And I did have to work today, I do have a teenager and you guys are very expensive, so FYI, I was at work, so I apologize I couldn't be here for, for the lunch and the breakfast, but I know you're in good hands with my colleagues.
Today I got to shadow Mr. Headmark. Off rip, we got to just talking about everything. We, we were able to relate on a lot of levels, whether it be our jobs, because I kind of have, I have a job that kind of matches up with his, so he got to inform me about a lot of that. And I got to learn a lot about the behind the scenes of just the recruiting of the personnel throughout all the schools. So yeah, I had a really good time today and I'm happy that I got to choose him for, to shadow.
I think Jacob was a great example of what I think is probably one of the most articulate and talented mock boards I've ever seen in 20 years. You guys all knocked out of the park, just your abilities and your presentation tonight was really great. High school quarterback, going to Wayne State to play football downtown. Defensive end, had it wrong. His uncle was a quarterback. Defensive end, playing at Wayne State. We talked about downtown and the haunts downtown and how much he's going to enjoy it and how Wayne State has grown and it's going to be a much more exciting place for him to be. He is right, he's managing a trampoline, so what's it called? Skyzone. He's managing a Skyzone, which is a trampoline establishment and we, you know, deals with employees coming late and being absent. We shared all those kinds of things and it doesn't change, it's the same sort of thing. It was a great day, he's going to do really good things. And at Wayne State, he's going into bio, biomedical engineering, so when I need a replacement hip or something like that, I'll know who to call. All right, so congratulations, it was really great. So congratulations, it was really great.
Hi again, I'm De'Ani John and I was shadowing Ms. Rayetta. And she does all your money, so don't mess with her, because you won't get paid if you make her, if you make her mad. But today, we had a lot, a lot of talk about questioning about high, not high school, college, what I was going to, what I was doing. I shadowed her because she was a business of finance and I wanna go to college for business. So I just felt like it was the perfect opportunity for me to take. And she was a very sweet woman, very, very nice to talk to. And I had a great day with her.
Thank you, De'Ani. I, I was so happy that she was with me today. She was very, parents should be very proud of her. Very articulate, very funny. She seems so level-headed. She told me about a car accident she had had and how even keeled she was for that. She needs that if she's gonna have a business of her own. She's aspiring to be a barber and own her own business. So she's gonna be going into business and, which is a great thing to do before you have your own business. So, she's wonderful. I'm looking forward to everything she does in the future. I hope she keeps in touch.
So today I shadow Joe Smith. One of the biggest reasons I shadow Joe Smith is because I knew he shared a passion in football, so I knew we'd get along. Today we learned about just what's like, the heat going on into the building and then we looked what was going on in the gym and he showed me all the cameras around and he even offered me a job post-graduation if I needed it. So, I appreciate it.
Yeah, today was great. I mean, not only because I, I got to hang out with Brian today, but I had Drew also. Drew, Drew left me hanging down there, but, but I had both guys and, and they were great. Both, both great heads on their shoulders, both going to McComb, both working full-time now and going to school. He's writing scholars, he's got two jobs. I mean, it's just really got it going on. I, I was almost jealous because my, I can't even get my eighteen-year-old to get a job, so. But, no, I mean, you, you guys just keep doing what you're doing. You're doing great and I appreciate today, it was fun.
I'm Asher Ballhawk and I had the honor of shadowing Mr. Collins. He's the school board attorney. He makes sure we don't get sued, so good on him. We got to talk a little bit before we started. It was great to hear his stories about the law. He's going to MS, he went to MSU, I'm going to MSU. And a lot of the stuff he was talking about, I was just very interested in. So, you know, I'll thank him for that.
I guess, I get so optimistic about the future when I attend this meeting. It, it just really feels good. Any individual that's gonna go into electrical engineering, I have respect for, because that is a hard major. I mean, that's not something you're gonna slough off on at all. He's going to a university that I hold dear and he's gonna live in the same dorm that I lived in, too. And I had the ability to, to meet his mother and indicated how important the sacrifices that a parent makes. And, and he said, it was very nice, keep telling her those things. She loves hearing them. And I thought, okay, that is great. Here's a young man that understands his parents, that understands they need some rewards, too. They need to have some feedback. So, you'll do great. You'll, you'll have, well, you'll have a good time, too. That's what I told him, that he will. I, I did talk about that without going into detail, just that you'll have a great time. And so, it was really nice meeting you.
Alright, I know you guys have all been waiting for this. So obviously I miss Janay, the goat, Miss Make It Happen, the one who really calls the shots. If you couldn't tell, she picked for us to go last, she calls the shots. But not, you, you guys would never tell, could never tell if you just look at her, have a conversation with her, but she does, she does a lot. Not just dealing with Mr. Janay in the back, but being a board member here for Roseville, being a board member at McComb Intermediate School District, it's a lot. It's like, seven days a week, it sounds like she's doing something for somebody. And they talked about the pay for doing this school board and it's not worth it at all. So, it's definitely, it's definitely for the kids. It's definitely, I can tell, she does it for the kids. I can tell they all do it for the kids. It's not easy doing her job and, yeah.
That was very nice. Thank you so much. When we started out this morning, they were all very afraid. They weren't sure what they're gonna do, they didn't wanna do it. Some of them wanted to go home. It was a piece of cake, wasn't it? It was fun. What you gotta do, though, this year is get to the juniors and tell them what you did. Let us these juniors know how, what a fun day it is, so they'll do it next year. Maybe they can show the video to the kids. And you're our best advocate. We hope we, when we started this meeting this afternoon, our president here decided he was gonna gavel. Scared the jeezies out of us, because he hit it so hard, I think he broke my gavel. So, so just to show you that you're gonna be ending this meeting pretty soon, because you did such a good job today. Speaking of speed readers, he's a speed speaker. We tried to get him to slow down a little bit, but he's doing really good. It was fun. But just to let you know that I bought you something. Here's your own gavel. So when you call the meeting to end, I wouldn't hit that gavel pad, because you're gonna break it, so hit the other one. Go ahead. What you gonna do now?
I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Jalen Taylor, I second a mo-, I second motion to adjourn.
I need, I need a second motion to adjourn.
Irish Hedrick, I second a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Jalen Taylor, I second motion. I third, I motion to adjourn this meeting.
Just stop.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Have a good night, everyone.